Let's allegiance to the flag of the majesty of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For please pass all here in attendance and come to make the best decisions we can for the town of Monrovia.
Amen.
All right, phone call. Eddie Mendel, I'm here. I think. So Fowler.
Yep, here.
Lori Cho.
Here.
And you have the president, Tom.
Yep.
And Meyer.
Yep.
That's Mark.
Here.
Donald Jones.
Present.
All right, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing, creating an ordinance regulating shipping containers.
I move that we open the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Did anybody sign up?
No. I'm not sure either of them.
I do just something. Do I need to speak?
No, but if you want to, you can.
So I just sign that just in case I need to speak?
I suppose, yeah.
You want to speak about the shipping containers, too?
I just want to know if it pertains to me, this container.
Uh, I don't know if it pertains to you or not.
I never.
That's a hard question.
I don't know if it pertains to you or not. So what, do you want for or advanced or just wish to comment?
Just give her the wish to comment and then go from there.
Did you get a copy of the meeting agenda?
I'm going with all of this.
Yep, there's a scan thing on there where you can scan and get the same documents that we're looking at.
Oh, great.
Which is the proposal for the shipping container.
All right, well, I guess I'll read this off, so. Audience. Understand where we're at. An ordinance of the town of Monrovia, Indiana regarding the regulation of shipping containers. Whereas the town council of Monrovia, Indiana recognizes the need to regulate the use of shipping containers, also known as Conex containers, within the town limits to maintain public safety, aesthetics, and property values. And whereas the town council acknowledges that certain property owners currently utilize shipping containers and desires to allow the continued use of such containers under certain conditions. And whereas the town council finds it necessary to prohibit the installation of new shipping containers to preserve the character and appearance of the community. All right, does anybody up here have anything to say about it?
No, I think the way it stands is a good, good way to write it because that enables people to keep their shipping containers as long as they keep them in good shape.
Right, there's a, the section two grandfathering of existing shipping containers, so.
Yeah, it has to be maintained in good condition.
And from what I understand from reading it was that if you move that shipping container, it needs to, it cannot be replaced with another shipping container.
That's the way this reads.
And you can't enlarge them and you can't modify them as well, so.
So as I read this, the way it's written, if, uh, let's just say I'm remodeling my house and I want to rent one from pods to store some stuff in.
That's not a shipping container.
If I'm, if I'm, that is a shipping container.
What would that, Frank?
But that doesn't define in here that a shipping container or a Conex container, if you look them up, that's what a pod is.
Let's take a look.
Then we can.
I'm gonna look, I know, I'm gonna look it up.
We can make a stipulation, those are, those typically are.
Temporary.
Temporary and for moving purposes, so there should be.
And pods would be temporary.
A time limit that those are placed on a property possibly. Those being.
Right.
Temporary use.
But honestly, if somebody's moving and they have one dropped off, I'm just saying that is a shipping container. They come, they load all your stuff into a shipping container and move it across the country. Per this, you could find me $500 a day for that.
Right, but that is.
I'm not saying that you would, but I'm saying.
The definition that this ordinance is going to cover, it is pretty much is spelled out. Now, if you want, we could add number three, temporary moving containers such as pods or whatever those are.
I'd like to remind everybody, this is just a rough draft of it. Make your changes here, so we can change things as we need to, add, take away, whatever, before it goes to the town council.
Besides, a pods container wouldn't be sitting there for like a couple of years.
Uh, where did you get that?
It could be for 90 days. If someone was doing a remodel. And they set one in the driveway, remove stuff out of the garage or something while they're remodeling their house, it could be there for two, three, four months. You might get someone that keeps one there for six months.
What does your HOA say about that? Does the H O A address that?
Thank you, you're right, Kenny. That's all they worry about. They never said, it doesn't have anything.
I don't think I've ever seen.
I've never seen.
Pod out in Homestead for any length of time. It might be a week or two at most. I've seen them.
Yeah, most of them are short-term because they're expensive.
Then, then if this, there is a concern about that, then we should add in section one in the definitions that pods style moving contain, used for moving purposes are exempt from.
Short-term, temporary.
And are for, considered short-term use.
And I think we should limit that short-term to two weeks.
No, two weeks isn't enough.
If you have a house that you're remodeling, you need to take your stuff and move it into a storage instead of having something sitting there bothering your neighbors for three months.
I don't know, some houses require a lot of renovation. I, I can imagine that you would have a, a time where you would be out there for maybe two, one or two months, so I, I think two weeks would be too short.
I think 90 days is.
I think 90 days is fair.
And I also think that strictly prohibited is the common rule of the region. I feel like.
I was getting to that moment. You know, is there no.
Situation where it would be acceptable?
Yeah, I feel like.
Is, it's prohibited unless you come and ask for permission or something. There's not even a section in there that says you can come and request, you know, like somebody said, I'm gonna do a site survey, something, you know, this is what I plan to do something.
Correct me if I'm wrong, couldn't they apply for a variance?
This just says strictly prohibited. Nothing in here says you can apply for anything.
Is there anything in any of them that say that you can apply for a variance?
Nope, nothing in here.
You just have to apply for the variance.
They get registered with the, the town clerk, the ones that are already out there. So anything that would be out, outside of the ones that are already there, I still think we would still be looking at a minuscule number of them.
Oh, I agree.
And we wouldn't be looking at it.
Maybe we should put in a way to, something, if someone needs to use it, that they should bring forth to the planning commission.
Let's see, I hate that one because that's what happens to everything.
Yeah, well.
I don't feel like they should be strictly prohibited or totally disallowed. I mean.
I like, I'm gonna, my thought, um, I, I really feel like there are some of them that they use, like outdoor bars or, you know, they open them up and they do like cool little landscaping features, that kind of thing. I don't, I'm not saying that I think that they should just be allowed in everybody's driveway.
Right, they can be.
Shed or something like that. I'm not saying that.
I would think that you should be allowed to get a permit to use it for a, a building on your property. I mean, you can, you can make them aesthetically pleasing, all right, and it's immediate. You can get it delivered and it's, it's on your property. I mean.
You can't have that in Homestead or in our neighborhood.
It's, it's an alternative to a storage building. And no, you can't have them in Homestead.
Or in our neighborhood.
Don't have enough property in your neighborhood, I, you know, but if you have, if you have a half an acre lot, I mean, providing you can meet the setbacks, it's not that much different than building a, a small storage shed.
Then should that be reworked so that any future use must come, must be presented to the planning.
Well. I, I think.
Something like that.
I think that they should require a permit.
It could all be in the same.
And a permit, basically, when you, when you get a permit, you submit a site plan, kind of, all right, that, that gets reviewed by the, the plant administering office, all right? You have to meet the setbacks and, you know, I mean, honestly, you can put siding on them and make them look like a regular building.
No different than committing, getting a permit or a garage? You know, since.
Right, basically.
If you're gonna be using it as a building, I mean, so similar, similar to that.
Yeah, that, well, that's my thoughts on it, you know, I, I mean.
Yeah, strictly prohibited is kind of.
It might be a little too strong, but I don't think it's too strong.
I don't think it's too strong.
Maybe not strictly.
I agree.
Because if you start allowing the exceptions, then everybody hops on the bandwagon. Why'd you even make the rule?
Well, there's a clause in here that speaks to the, uh, the highway corridor. I think that.
What is that?
That was my question.
In the highway corridor, they should be strictly prohibited.
It's in the, it's in the, the compact plan, it's out there on the website.
Well, I, I, Kenny, I was just saying we all.
I understand, I'm trying to say.
Right now, I believe the corridor is just down 39, but.
Yes.
I think you should.
So 48, 49, 42, but how high is it? I mean, is it, I mean, how?
You can see, you can see.
You know, is it, you know, 1,000 feet on each side of 39?
Well, you have to look at the, if you see the diagram, then you're gonna understand what's going on.
Right, well, and it depends on how you read that U D O. So it's between 150 and 300 feet.
That's it.
From the roadway. Uh, you know, the highway corridor is State Road 39 through town and State Road 42 through town.
The commercial corridor is what it is.
So basically both the state roads.
Right, I, you know, I, I don't think that, uh, we, we should have those things just sitting willy-nilly all along that corridor, you know, I mean, if you're gonna have one of them, it should be out of sight to, to people driving down the, the state road, yeah.
Can we jump back since, I mean, if we're gonna kind of go through this section by section, even though it's not very long, should we just jump back to the definitions and add, decide what, like, storage pods and then move farther out?
Yeah.
You know, finalize what we feel. I think pods style should be.
So we need to put something in there.
About pods and about, you know, temporary, temporary use is allowed. I'm not good at coming up with definitions, but. Moving, moving style containers such as pods shall be exempt for a term of 90 days.
Or whatever the contract is with the pod people.
Yeah, and those can vary. You can, I'm sure you can rent them for.
Yeah.
Differing lengths of time, but, I mean, is 90 days enough?
Well, we have, we have a, the stipulation here in this about where the ones that are already here are registered with the town manager. Maybe the town manager should be aware. I know what I was just saying.
I'm just looking at the definitions.
For just pods?
Makes sense to have strategy to get rid of them.
Yes, so I think pods should be exempt and we should exempt them for, or pods and similar styles. I mean, there's quite a difference. If you're looking at it side by side, there's an obvious difference between a shipping container and a moving container. You know, I don't think I've ever seen anybody have a shipping container drawn out.
Moving containers got advertising stamped all over it.
Pardon?
Moving containers got advertising stamped all over it.
It does.
So, I mean.
So you think number three should be temporary storage of pods up to 90 days or whatever the contract amount is.
Well, we're gonna, we're just gonna define it in the, in the first section and we'll talk about the 90 days left that goes later on as far as.
Yeah, so. Can we go further?
When we get to be part of, be of section.
So that would be in definitions, would be the section one, it would be number three then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So this is a problem here.
If you want to say anything. I, I did, are we at a section three yet on prohibition? Because.
No.
Okay.
Well, Lauren had some type of question.
I was gonna suggest that a lot of contractors, but then the locations where they're building or remodeling, whether they store their two homes and supplies.
What type?
The, the storage container.
Right, but typically, if they're gonna do that, they clear it through, through the planning.
Yeah, they'll, they'll have a building for me or something.
Right.
So that, that could be.
Right, they.
Stipulation in there.
They, they have construction trailers, office trailers that they sometimes set up.
And they love those storage containers because they're heavy to eat. They can easily walk or some trailers, uh, you know, you can pack up those bulldog with them.
Right. All right, so we're to section three, prohibition of new shipping containers.
Okay, I, I think we should, is, is any shipping container installed after the effective date, blah, blah? I think we also should add something to the fact that, you know, as far as new shipping containers, this excludes temporary containers. I think we should add a, 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 a D, the prohibition, under prohibition, it says this excludes.
A D or a four?
Well, D, it, it, okay, in section three, prohibition of new shipping containers, you've got A, B, and C, saying we add a D where we say that the temporary containers. Huh?
I agree with that.
Okay, thank you. It, it, that way we say we're excluding right here, excluding, you know, pods or whatever the definition we have prior for the temporary containers.
May I make another question, have another question? So is everybody okay with the section two grandfathering in? So we should, don't need to really change that?
Yeah, that looks good.
I'm also good with number three, which is, if they're removed, they can't be replaced.
Yeah, but that, that's, yeah, we're, we've moved on to, yeah.
So that.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know if you, we were on the same page. I didn't mean to. I'm just watching the weather storm. Oh, you got a question, I think.
So where from then, I am gonna be building on, so I need to move mine over closer to the festival building, the ones that are behind the building. So I have two tan ones that are new and I have two green ones and a blue one. If I put, if I, if I paint them to make them look better, I don't wanna paint the tan ones because they're new and they look okay. The others, I would love to paint them so they look better. What color would you like them painted? I was thinking gray because my building's kind of gray. Would you like a white? Would you like a purple? What color?
It'd be Monrovia green and have the bulldog on.
Well, I prefer that too. Do you want that? What, I mean, so the, the uniform, the two that I got are kind of brownish tan, the four-door ones.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm in the process of trying to build on, but my builder's making the plans now and then I gotta go to state. So it's gonna be next spring probably before I can get the plans to you guys and get the building.
And I think that that's why we're doing strictly prohibited, so you could just do like, register for a permit to move them and.
Yeah.
Well, I would, I think I would follow in on the permit part.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but I need to register that.
Right, and then when you wanna move them, but I'm saying I wanna get along, yes, I wanna keep them because I need them. But I would like to make them look better too, so I need input. What color do you think would be the best?
Myself, I, I would like to see something that they don't stand out as much as possible, so possibly closer to your building color, so it kind of matches, everything on the property matches.
I'm fine with that.
I agree.
I don't think a big bulldog in Monrovia, that would make it stand out too much. I mean, the closer to your building color.
Yeah.
To me, I think would look more a part of the property.
And that goes along with the aesthetics, yep.
I mean, that's, I think that would work for me.
So it is okay because it's talking about in here, you can't move them around, so I am.
Basically devil's advocate just for a second, just to, so if she's planning, if she has five containers and the way it's written now, she has her container set or registered this, and she goes and decides to add on and she has to move those containers out of the way and relocate them, like she's saying, is she going to be, can't relocate?
No, no, it says that if the shipping container is removed from the property, it may not be replaced. I think she's gonna be fine.
It's still gonna be on the property, it's just only in a different place.
Well, we're talking about moving them off of.
No, I think she says, I thought, I thought I saw something too where.
Oh, wait a minute, here it is, relocated.
No, without a, without a first, it doesn't say.
Can, can we go ahead and change that? I mean, as far as town council, I mean, if you wanna, we'll have a town council meeting just to go ahead and talk about relocation on there. Isn't that something that the town manager could do instead? I'm, I'm just saying, it's, it's what we hire a town manager for, and I just feel like that would just be, you know.
Well, they're gonna look better all uniformed.
Yeah, but I'm just saying we're using a sledgehammer to put a pushpin in with that, that's just my opinion. But, I mean, Tammy, what do you think?
Um, I, I think that's a bigger question trying to decide. I mean, I feel like the town council would have to kind of set that they think the powers for the management should be in, I don't, I speak entirely for the council, so.
Yeah, that's something the council could tweak.
So.
Yeah, okay, that's something, you're right.
I can, I can understand where she's getting at, is just to move them on her property, it, it does kind of imply that she needs to have approval for that.
Well, what.
She might get that when she did the construction.
Yeah, but, but this is pretty much also set up like this also. We're trying to keep somebody from, say, maybe using them to build a wall on their property or something and that, that effect, but she's not trying to, it's just.
Well.
So if I get them moved before this goes through.
That's what I was just gonna say, move them before this goes through. No, okay, but.
It's easier to get, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than get, get permission, so.
Wouldn't.
I think we could take out the relocate on their property.
Yeah.
Because we're, it's still gonna be covered under the corridor that's been up on Main Street.
Right, all right, in section three, paragraph A, where it says, after the effective date of this ordinance is strictly prohibited. I'll go back to what I said earlier. I feel like they're a viable means of storage and they could actually be used as a building, so I, I would think that would, it would require a permit.
Well, so why is A even in there? The, the ordinance covers what A is talking about anyways. I don't see what A is on there for. I would remove A. I don't see the point in it because that's what the whole ordinance is. I would remove A completely.
Well. Must be permitted or approved by the town council.
Must be permitted or something.
You would just change it to say requires a permit or talking to the plan commission.
Right.
Strikes strictly prohibited and, and change that to.
Requires.
Or prohibited without requires or requiring.
Right.
And $500 a day is kind of stupid because you can't get it moved in one day. But I mean, I guess everybody should find out before they get one.
That's the idea.
Yeah, that, and that's the purpose of the ordinance is so that they don't.
See, I, I like to go.
There should be a warning anywhere.
Yeah.
But I mean, if they're gonna be used as a building structure, then they should be permitted as such.
But, but if you look at A and you look at B on section three here, the first one is the placement, installation, or use of any shipping containers on any property within town limits after the effective date of this ordinance is gonna be regulated by something. We've already gone ahead and changed that.
Requires a more.
Okay, requires a permit. And then we can say, any shipping container installed after the effective date of this ordinance shall be considered a violation and subject to removal at the owner's expense. But then again, I would say, get rid of A and put on there unless, unless, you know, it's been registered or, or some sort of agreement has been done, because I think we're, we're, we're overlapping here and you have two things on here that's, it's unnecessary.
Well, we can leave that up to Marion and Donald, I think, to make sure that, you know, because we'll be tabled this and bringing you back after changes, Chris.
Well, yeah.
Or we'll be sent, we'll be sent, send it along, does it, is this gonna go to the town council after us?
Right, well, we can make the changes that we feel like need to be made and then we can send a recommendation.
With the changes to the town council.
To the town council.
And then the town council can go ahead and decide, well, do we want it this way or do we want to change it?
Send it back to us for more changes? Well, no, I mean, but that's a process, right? If they don't, if they see something they don't like at the town council, they can send it back to us, table it, send it back to us and say.
If the town council.
Right.
Right, the town council decides they, they don't like something about it, they can, they can make that adjustment themselves.
Yeah, because we only recommend, right, we only recommend.
Right, we're just recommending, recommending to the town council.
Okay, so what's the official form that's gonna go to the town council too? We haven't made a decision on that because everybody's written different notes on it.
We have a plan.
That would be something like we collectively decide and go down the list so I can make notes so that we can implement that.
Yeah, let's go ahead. I think that would be the white course of action and take here because, I mean, I'm sure all of us have different ideas about what's supposed to come here on the end. I still think that section three is.
That's what we started to do when we got off the track.
I think we're down to this three D. And I think if any shipping container installed after the effective date of this ordinance shall be considered.
Will require a permit?
Will require a permit.
Be stricken. Any shipping, like if you just put up there a requirement permit.
Yeah, you've already covered the, that's why I'm saying, one's redundant, it's.
So we could, we could strike B.
Right.
Could we not?
Yes, yes.
Uh, no, because you got the owner's expense in there.
Well, it's gonna be owner's expense of the violation anyways. We already have that in our U D O. We already have violations.
Okay, so striking B?
Yeah, strike B.
Strike B.
For A or you put, uh, the last part instead is strictly prohibited will be, will require.
A permit, yeah.
And then we'll set fee schedule next time probably, once it's approved and everything.
Yeah. And then we have C, which is fine, and then D, of course, we're excluding. And then we have C, which is fine, and then D, of course, we're excluding the parts.
D, exclude the temporary...
Yeah.
Losing pods.
Right. Because when you're talking about owner's expense, the enforce, that comes under enforcement and penalties anyways. Yeah. Uh, I would add that on B, I would say, "Each day that a violation continues shall constitute a separate offense." I would say, unless, unless some sort of arrangements have been made with...
Well, we're striking B, aren't we?
No, I'm talking about section four.
Okay, let me know that.
Okay. Section four, because I, I, rather than just go ahead and arbitrarily put this out, this is a little heavy-handed. Again, we're using a sledgehammer for a pushpin. I would think...
Who wrote that?
Huh?
Who wrote that?
Oh, I don't know.
I think Mary Ann may have written it. I don't even know if section four is necessary.
Okay.
I mean, this is going to be added to the UDO, is it not?
Yeah, and so violations of the UDO come under the, yeah, I agree.
So there's a violation section in the UDO.
Where those, that, you remember, we have, uh, our violations, how much the fee is for violating, we already have that section, so you're right.
So, so then what you're saying, section four is already covered by the UDO?
Yes, I agree.
So I think we can strike that.
In order to make this a valid document, you might need enforcement.
No, it, it is, it's part of the UDO, so this will be adopted into the UDO.
Agreed.
And he's right, there is already, and, and we have, you're on the violation sphere.
I've never met with anybody about it.
We haven't had to have a meeting.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, because that's what that's for. If someone needs a violation, fine.
Well, I thought I was, but...
I thought you were on it, I don't know. I don't know, Tammy, did, is she on it? Is she on it? Oh, okay, so you're, you're on it, so...
We just haven't...
Haven't had a meeting.
We have a need in our neighborhood.
There's only, you only need if somebody is contesting their violation.
Right.
Oh, okay, so the people in our neighborhood did not contest their violation. They don't even contact, we can't even contact them, right?
Oh, on...
Talk later?
Yes.
Severability.
I don't know if we need that either.
That's, that's legal. That says that if one part's not enforceable, then the rest of it is still enforceable. So it's, that's in almost all the filings as I move it.
Yeah, section six is standard, that's boilerplate. So, yeah, I'm good with the rest of it.
I just feel like in any contract, that you have to have a, a enforcement clause. So that might be something we have to ask the attorney for, right?
I think we already have it as far as the UDO is concerned.
Well, and like you said, this is a recommendation to the council, so that we can have that looked at by the attorney too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll get a chance to discuss it at the town council as well.
Then I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
It had to do that first. I, I thought that's what Tammy was gonna do, are you gonna close the public hearing?
Yeah, I, I...
Er, do you have any other comments?
I'm good. I just, if you're having your fun saying that, we all get along, I'm good.
Government's supposed to help people, not hurt.
Then I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it.
We'll try to check quick.
Oh, and then, uh...
All right, this is, uh...
Yeah, I, oh, I thought you were gonna ask us...
All right, this is considered with the intent and purposes of the ordinances of the town of Monrovia, Indiana. It does advance the general welfare of the town of Monrovia, Indiana and the immediate neighborhood. So now we can consider... There's a motion.
I, I move that we forward this to the town council on a favorable recommendation.
I'll second her.
Kenny, say it.
Kenny Meyer.
Yep. Keep wanting to call him Kenny Walmart, it's Meyer.
Yeah, wish I was.
No, I'm just kidding.
Wish I was in that family.
That guy was a congressman from Michigan.
All right, so...
It's just one head.
Oh, sorry.
You keep doing... See?
Okay. All right, Eddie Menzel, um, um, for Kenny Myers, for Chad Clark.
Against.
Pardon?
Against.
Against?
Yep.
Tammy Everett.
For.
Bill Tyler.
E, uh, for.
Laurie Cho.
For.
Robert Nichols.
For.
All right, that's six, four, one again. All right, the next item on the agenda is an amendment to ordinance to the UDO, section two, D, one, B.
You'll find a copy of it in your package.
All right, first, we need to open a public hearing.
I move that we open a public hearing.
Yes, I'll second that one too. I'll be the side.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, for me, the practical use of an access street in town proper is, doesn't exist. On State Road 42, all the buildings that exist already are built right on the road. All right, and on State Road 39, the practical use of, to, to, to put that in, the lots aren't large enough, they're not deep enough.
You have to be north of IGN, right?
Right, and I, I, I would agree that north of Broderie, all of that commercial property on the east and the west side of the road, indot is gonna require an access road. They're, they're only gonna allow one road cut for both of those...
Right.
Commercial properties.
What about, I mean... So you'd go north, right past Homestead.
Right.
On, on the Homestead side, you got...
That's the west side.
The west side, you got those couple of houses there and that pond and all that stuff, so would you...
You wouldn't wanna...
Those houses will probably stay residential use for, for quite a long time.
So it would just be, the frontage road would just be Eagle Creek and then in front of Homestead would be just...
Right, well, and Falkenburg owns some properties that border Broderie.
Yeah, on both sides of the road.
Before you get to the property that Gady now owns, but that, a, all of that would require an access road. Indot is not gonna allow five different road cuts down through there, or just not. And those, uh, I mean, we're all familiar with them. Every, every time you go shopping anywhere, you don't just turn into the place you're going shopping. You have to turn in and get on a, a, an access road to, to get to the different shops or restaurants or whatever.
So what kind of amendment are we looking at?
Yeah, what are we asking to amend? Do you know? What, what are we being asked to amend?
Well...
I wasn't sure when I was looking at this stuff the other day.
We need to put something in...
The access standards for the frontage street, uh, is, is what we're, we're trying to eliminate.
You mean B?
Where it says, in the, sorry, I didn't mean to. Where it says, "Front streets must be provided for parcels along the corridor."
You're talking about eliminating B.
That's where the issue is, because the corridor is more than just, it's all through town and everything.
Right.
And going north.
Right.
So that part is what you're, I'm assuming, or I feel needs to be changed?
What, like eliminated?
Well...
Section B, part one.
Right.
Section B.
Yeah, section B, are we looking at eliminating it? Is that what the intent is?
Well, I don't know if eliminate, it's still, I, I feel it still needs to be there because of the property north of town, because what we're gonna have on east and west of 39 is gonna be hopefully business. So frontage road will probably be required there for the reason...
Right, north of Broderie.
So Broderie is the, the south entrance into Homestead?
Yes.
Right north of Freyberg's? Okay. And that house, that, that, the one that they, the second entrance they put into Homestead, that's Broderie?
Right. Yeah, that's Broderie. And, uh, I mean, like I said, Falkenburg has some properties there before you get to the, the property that's part of the Homestead PUD.
Right, right.
But it'll be the same way. He won't be able to access his, those properties from, from 39, they'll have to put a, an entrance to them off of Broderie.
Yeah, because of the, the fact that since 39 is a singular, uh, uh, north and, and south artery into Monrovia, we only have one, so of course we're gonna demand a frontage road. We had multiple arteries, I mean, we had multiple, uh, north and south throughways, it would be a different story, but we don't. And being that it's a state road, that's the way they are.
Well, and so then what you're saying is possibly change it to, "Front streets must be provided for parcels along the corridors north of Broderie."
Could you also achieve the same thing if you said, like, um, for any, um, like, non-exit, like a...
Undeveloped?
Yeah, undeveloped.
Undeveloped property, yeah.
Well, you gotta be a little, because we're, next week, the planning, or with the BZA, we're still getting the ice cream shop going, it's undeveloped right now, so if you put undeveloped in there...
Well, we're talking about north of Broderie.
Well, that's what I mean, if she, if we're just putting undeveloped and not north of...
No, but I said if we, north of Broderie, undeveloped property, north of, of...
Broderie?
Broderie. On both sides of the road.
What happens when we start going south?
What's that?
What happens when our town starts growing to the south and to the west and to the east?
Well, the problem right now with that, okay, is, south, we're, we're bordered by the back of the high school where, where 39 goes. And of course, how are we gonna go ahead and annex any of that stuff when we go that way also? So, I mean, frontage road, we can't do that for 42, it doesn't make any sense, because of all the businesses that are already on, and we can't go ahead and eliminate those term ops.
Well, if any of the farms along 42 were to develop, then yes, we would want access road.
That would, maybe we should go with...
I think they, you just leave it alone.
Well, see, what I'm thinking about is this too. Okay, you, what about where Prey comes out and, and becomes, um, Baltimore, you know, where the 42 is? I mean, can you imagine that splitting and turning into a frontage road from there? I don't know how that would work, because of the, the geography of the, the lay of that land there. I mean, we already have problems with that intersection as it is. But I'm just saying, where would you start a frontage road on that? That's it?
No, I was talking about, like, open fields.
Okay.
Right, I, I...
What, like the Everett?
I'm gonna think undeveloped.
Encompasses enough?
Probably, yeah, that would cover everything, because i- if we leave it as undeveloped, then it gets everything you're talking about, if we go east or west or south or north.
So just undeveloped parcels?
Along the corridor? Corridors?
Well, this, this is part of the corridor overlay anyway.
Because really, when it talks about the corridor and it's a period, they're, they're talking about 39, then 42 isn't included, because if you look at the, at the comprehensive plan, the commercial corridor is 39, it doesn't list 42 as...
I, I thought the corridor overlay was 39 and 42, maybe I'm mistaken.
I may, maybe I'm mistaken.
I thought it showed, I thought it showed it going out to 42 west to Everett.
Oh, okay.
That's why I asked for a picture.
Okay.
Yes, can we get a picture?
But I, yeah, I'd put undeveloped in there, provided for undeveloped parcels. I would be in favor of doing that.
Is the UDO loaded onto this?
Yeah, just go to the website. Just go to the website.
Here, yeah, just go to the website.
Some texts have some...
I got it, but where's it at in?
I have, I have my UDO sitting right here.
What's the...
What page is it?
It's chapter two, isn't it?
That's what I'm looking for, if I knew what page it is.
Yeah, if I knew what page it was, because, uh... All right. Okay, yeah.
Their four-door overlay.
Because you have segment two.
I think it's chapter two.
Chapter two residential d...
Western town limits.
Business districts, industrial, oh, uh, the overlay is on page 10, folks. Page 10, section two. Highway corridor overlay, there it is. You're right, State Road 39 and 42. Did I say it correct? It's in 2.7, highway corridor overlay.
Where's that tomorrow, though? He's right here.
Yep.
Yeah, so this is all farm land.
It's 2025.
What page did you say that was?
Uh, right, uh, page, uh, chapter two, page 10, right here.
It's 20 top.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I was looking at the top there. Yeah, just having 24. There you go.
It pops right up. There we go.
Okay, I've got a quick question.
Yeah, State Road 39, I have 42.
Where did you get that?
I went to here. Okay, go to Monrovia.
I'm in Monrovia, I'm in the farms, but I don't wanna be in farms.
No, you don't wanna be in farms.
Where are we at? Scroll down, just in the main picture?
Yeah.
With the arrow keys?
Yeah, I don't have it here.
Here, arrow key, see this, up and down key? Yeah, there you go.
I always use my mouse.
You went too far. Go back up. You're fine.
See, this'll take some time to get used to.
This, this one here.
Uh, comprehensive plan. Oh, that's fine.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, now what page?
Go up there to where that one is written, type in the word number 24. Four. Well, hit enter. There you go.
So that's, so where's the...
So, so actually, the only thing that we really need to change is paragraph B, "Furnished streets must be provided for parcels along the corridor," so it should say, "For undeveloped..."
Okay, now I have one more quick question of what it was related to. Is where the ice cream shop, is that still considered undeveloped?
Yes.
Now that, you know...
We still just have to ask for...
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're, that, that is still, I mean, it's going to the BZA next week and...
But see, that, that's why you go and get a variance.
Okay.
Yeah.
You still go for a variance on that one, so. You would still have to get it anyway, because this isn't approved, we can't guarantee that would be, you know, approved, so you still have to get the variance.
Since we haven't had any...
So is that a new variance he has to get, then?
No, it's just part of the.
Part of it, so.
But since we haven't had any speakers on this and anything, I'd like to move that we close public hearing. Since we are just discussing it amongst ourselves.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So be it.
And I'd like to go ahead and move that we insert the word undeveloped in front of word parcels on.
Then you might want to consider that property on the east side that's undeveloped.
Yeah. This would cover that.
I'll second that motion. Did you add the word undeveloped area?
I already, oh, yeah.
But not north of Broderie, right? Just undeveloped.
It's just undeveloped.
Or undeveloped parcels.
I made that motion, she seconded.
All right, so Philip made the motion.
Laurie seconded.
Oh, I seconded it, yeah.
That's rare. That's very aggressive.
Do I?
It's very aggressive.
That's kind of strong language, I don't know. Okay.
I have two things here also.
Because I never even saw that.
Oh, the comprehensive plan's right next to it.
Yeah, I see it in the photo ordinances here, so really.
Two things here also before, before we vote. It is considered with the intent and purposes of the ordinances of the town of Monrovia. It does advance the general welfare of the town of Monrovia and immediate neighborhood. All right. This is, uh, favorable recommendation. Eddie Menzel, I'm for it. Kenny Meyer.
Four.
Chad Clark.
Four.
Tammy Everett.
Four.
Philip's four. Laurie Cho's four.
Yes.
Rob Nichols.
Four.
Seven, four. None against. All right, consideration of minutes.
I move that the minutes has presented be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it. Town council report informational purposes only.
I have a, a comment on that one. I spoke with Ricky today, there was some issue with the town council report in the past in terms of providing it to everybody. He's willing to come in and do the report himself to everybody on the plant commission in the future if that's something we want to do.
Yeah, I feel like the, there are videos and provided minutes.
Well, the minutes aren't approved, which was the controversy last time.
Okay.
That was what you raised up last time, Tammy, you're saying that we're, we're getting minutes that were not already approved, I understand why that was so, because it, it may be incorrect in some places, so.
And what?
They were incorrect.
Well, I spoke with him today, and he'd be willing to come in just to give the report.
That would be great.
Of the town, of what happened in the last town council. That way, there's not unapproved minutes being provided to people. It's him, he writes them for himself and then.
But that's the same.
Presents them to you guys.
Since it's informational purposes and that they're videotaped, that's my opinion.
I would just, yeah, I'd leave it alone too.
Sure, it was just an option we thought of.
Yeah.
It's already on video.
Well, I know, but if it's wrong.
Well, come to the town council meeting, we'll go ahead and correct.
Yeah.
Just, just to state that on the agenda, the fact that the things are not approved and not been voted on by the council.
It says information purposes only. Yeah, that's covered.
Whatever you guys say, and then if somebody wants to question it, that's watching the video.
Well, sometimes the video gets chopped off. Because we had that happen.
Do you watch every one of them?
Only when I'm not here.
Ah.
And so, one of them got chopped off at a really crucial point, so.
Raise our audience from three to four.
I'm trying to prevent that from, for every meeting that I'm not sitting here, I can.
I agree with Lauren, as long as it makes, you know, it says approved for informational purposes only.
Yeah. Yeah, that's cool.
I'm good with it too.
Your opinion on the idea?
I'm good with it. I'm good with it too, I don't see.
All right, planning and building report for June and July. In June, issued D.R. Horton, three single-family home permits. And Sam Schaefer, a remodel permit at two eighty-five South Chestnut. He's gonna turn the building into a laundromat down there.
He set it up herself today.
Yeah, they're not going to do the laundromat.
So he's changed his mind?
You got worried about the sewer races, what have them, and chased them off.
Well, I get this, no, but I get this, this is a big deal here because, well, but every, every time I go to the cleaners, they bring that up, they ask about the laundromat.
Personally, I don't see why we need a laundromat without a apartment buildings. I mean, you can, if, if somebody's desperate enough where their machine breaks down, they can always go to.
Can I just really leave all of our discussion to the meeting topics, please?
I would, sure, sure.
All right, for July, we have fourteen single-family home permits for D.R. Horton and one in-ground pool permit for Greg Davis. New old business?
Mr. Jones, have we got anything that you need from us?
No.
New business? I have one question about the sidewalk out here, are, are they going to landscape that better or is that left for the owner now? Were they towards yard up and then regraded it?
Um, that would be Mary Ann's question.
Mary Ann?
She's one last question on that.
All right, I don't have anything else.
I do have one question, that's new business, not old business. If you guys can give me feedback for the laptops, any issues you run into, what you like, what you don't like, anything I can get, I'll work on.
I have that issue of trying to access a QR.
Yes.
It's the only thing I have right now.
Yes.
Other than that, I don't have.
If it's an issue I can solve, I will, that one, I think you'll just have to uninstall one drive and it'll work perfectly.
Nobody else has anything else, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
I have a second.
Yeah.
Chad.
Chad.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See you next time.
No, we need to stay talk, before you start talking. I'm like, don't block me.
I'm like, let's go ahead and turn off our microphones.
Off the stream before you start talking.
Do you want us to leave our paperwork in here, or can we take it with us?
Can you take it with you?
What does everybody else?
I take mine with me.
Yeah.
I leave mine here so I don't have to pick up this thing.